Hello, everyone. Good afternoon, Pinon. Welcome to the Pinon Planning Commission meeting here at the Pinon City Council Chambers at 2131 Pear Street. This meeting will also be telecast via Zoom. Further details will be provided. Anyone would be able to submit a public comment by attending the meeting in person at the Pinon City Council Chambers by filling out a yellow public comment card and submitting it to the city planning manager, Hanam. Members of the public may also submit a live remote public comment via Zoom video conferencing. You can download the Zoom mobile app on your mobile device. If you're using a desktop computer, you can also use it via Zoom web browser and downloading it on your remote or whatever operating device that you have, whether it's PC, Mac, iPad, or Android. And the link is https://us02web.zoom/86505375301, and the webinar ID is 86505375301. You can also dial into the meeting via phone at the numbers 1-669-900-6833, or 1-253-251-8782, or 1-346-248-7799. Speakers will be asked to provide their name and city of residence, although this is not required for participation. Each speaker will be allowed up to five minutes to speak. Speakers will be muted until their opportunity to provide a public comment. When the chair opens the public comment period, for the item that you wish to speak on, please use the raise hand feature or press star nine if connecting via telephone, which will alert city staff if you have a comment to provide, or press star six to unmute. If you would like to video-enabled, please let the city clerk know, and we can turn your camera on once you are allowed to speak. Written comments can also be submitted to planning staff before the meeting at dhannham@pinon.gov. Please include your full name, city of residence, and the agita item that you are commenting on. There are other ways to watch the meeting, including live on Pinon TV Channel 26. They are recast the following week. The Pinon TV Channel 26 schedule is published on the city's website at www.pino.gov. They are also streamed via the city's website at www.pino.gov and will remain archived on the site for five years. If none of these options are available to you or you need assistance with public comment, please contact the planning manager, David Hanam, at 510-724-8912, or dhannham@pinon.gov. In compliance with Americans Disabilities Act, if you need special assistance to participate in a city meeting, or you would like a copy of the agenda packet in an alternative format, please contact the city clerk's office at 510-724-8928. Notification of at least 48 hours prior to the meeting or time when services are needing will help city staff in ensuring that reasonable arrangements can be provided to meet the needs for that meeting. Staff reports are also available for inspection on the city's website, and you may also contact the city clerk via email at hbe ll@pinon.gov. Any persons wishing to speak on an item listed on the agenda may do so when the chair asks for comments in favor or in opposition to an item under consideration. After all, those people wishing to speak have done so. The hearing will be closed, and the matter will be discussed amongst the commission prior to rendering a decision. Any person may appeal an action of the planning commission or by the planning manager by filing an appeal with the city clerk in writing within 10 days of such action. Following a public hearing, the city council may act to confirm, modify, or reverse the action of the planning commission, and the planning commission may act to confirm, modify, or reverse the action of the planning manager. The cost to appeal the decision is $500, with a minimum $2,500 deposit fee. Note, if you challenge a decision of the commission regarding a project in court, you will be limited to raising only those issues or someone else to raise in the public hearing or in writing delivered to the city hall at or prior to the public hearing. In accordance with the Ralph M. Brown Act, in enacting this chapter, legislature finds and declares that the public commissions, board, and councils, and other public agencies in the state exist to aid in the conduct of the people's business. It is the intent of the law that their actions be taken openly, and that their deliberations be conducted openly. The people of the state do not yield their sovereignty to the agencies which serve them. The people in delegating authority do not give public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know and what is not good for them to know. The people insist on remaining informed, so that may retain control over the instruments that they have created. And with that, we will call this meeting to order. And we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. And before we begin, we would like to acknowledge the Aloney people, who are the traditional custodians of this land. We pay our respects to the Aloney elders, past, present, and future, who call this place "Aloney Land" and the land that Pinon sits upon their home. We are proud to continue their tradition of coming together and growing as a community. We thank the Aloney community for their stewardship and support. We look forward into strengthening our ties as we continue our relationship with mutual respect and understanding. And with that, can we please have a roll call, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Huey?
Here.
Commissioner Uch?
Here.
Commissioner Martinez? He is absent. He notified us that he would not be at the meeting today, so just to let the commission know about that. Commissioner Lam Julian?
Present.
Commissioner Bender?
Present.
Vice Chair Minnis?
Here.
Chair Sandoval?
Present.
With the record show that we have a quorum, so we can take action on all of our business tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, planning manager, Hanam. Moving on to our next item, citizens to be heard. The public may address the planning commission on items that are within its jurisdiction or not otherwise listed on the agenda. Planning commissioners may discuss this matter brought to their attention, but by state law, the Brown Act, action must be deferred to a future meeting, and the time allowed is five minutes. Do we have any citizens to be heard, in person or online?
Okay, Chair, there is no one online right now.
Sounds good. I'll give it a couple, few more seconds. And it looks like we do not have any citizens to be heard, so we will be moving on to our next item, the meeting minutes. And we have the planning commission meeting minutes for April 28, 2025. I can go around. Are there any questions currently on the meetings, or any changes that the commission would like to make? And let's go ahead and start with Commissioner Lam Julian.
Yes, we have on page 15, line 12. It's 8:12, not 1:82. Page 17, line 43, St. James Square. And I am complete. Thank you.
Commissioner Huey?
No, thank you.
Vice Chair Minnis?
No comments or questions on the minutes.
Commissioner Bender?
Yes, I had two corrections. On page 13, line 35, and it will be also line 36. Excuse me, it's actually line 36. That sentence, on line 35, begins, "He had concern with the demand for more commercial space." And I would like to strike, I didn't say recommended consideration of a movement, strike the recommended consideration of a movement, and replace it with, so the sentence would read, "He had concern with the demand for more commercial space, and while he is interested in the movement in England to reuse buildings to reduce environmental impacts." If that is clear for the person transcribing. Then the second one pears on page 18, line seven. The sentence, on that page, the portion of the sentence starts with, "The lenders supported the grocery store." Supported should be replaced by the word "required." And that is it, for me.
Thank you, and Commissioner Uch?
No questions.
Any other questions or comments on the meeting minutes? All right. With that, I'd like to make a motion approving the meeting minutes from April 28, 2025, with the corrections noted from Commissioner Lam Julian and Commissioner Bender. Do we have a second?
All second.
Thank you. Can we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Huey?
I abstain.
Abstain? Okay. I was ready for that one. Commissioner Uch?
Yes.
Commissioner Lam Julian?
Yes.
Commissioner Bender?
Yes.
Vice Chair Minnis?
Yes.
Chair Sandoval?
Yes.
Motion carries 501 with one presumption.
Thank you. And with that, we are moving to our public hearings, and we do not have any public hearings scheduled tonight. Next item would be our old business, and we do not have any old business scheduled for tonight. And our next item would be our new business, review of the proposed preliminary capital improvement plan, CIP, fiscal year 2025 to '26 through fiscal year 2029 to 2030 with consistency with the general plan. Looks like we have our public works director. Can we get our presentation, please?
Sure. And while the presentation's being pulled up, actually, do I have audio here?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. Just making sure, because I'm not hearing the usual feedback effects. So I wanted to note my ex parte communications, since I got, didn't get a chance to mention it during roll call, had usual ex parte communications with my email list about the agenda in general, and with regards to this item in particular, I had some discussions at the city's combination Pride slash Juteen event with some members of the police department on item I-1. That's all. Thank you.
You can go ahead whenever you're ready. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, commission members, good evening. I'm Hiba El Genti, Public Works Director. This is my first time before you, so I'm quite happy, and I hope that I will get to work with you more in the future. The agenda item tonight is to provide you with a presentation on the five-year CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan, and its consistency with the general plan. The various elements that are mainly covered include the community character, growth management, the circulation element, housing, health and safety, and natural resources and open space. Staff recommends that the commission adopt the resolution included in the packet, indicating that the CIP is consistent with the general plan. But I would like to take this opportunity to actually walk you through at least some of the priority projects. Next slide, please. As you know, the five-year capital improvement plan, as was previous years, it's funded by various funding sources, including grants, major funds, enterprise fees. And this year, that was recently approved, is the vehicle impact fee that we would be able to utilize for pavement rehabilitation. The five-year plan extending from fiscal year 2526 through 2930 contains 45 projects and five infrastructure assessments, with the upcoming fiscal year 2526 prioritizing 24 projects and two infrastructure assessments. I should also mention that the CIP is developed to assist us with the planning of future projects. Only fiscal year 2526 is planned for adoption by city council on June 17, which is corresponding to the operating budget for the upcoming fiscal year as well. Next slide, please. So there are three facility-related projects that are planned for fiscal year 2526. And I listed the goals and policies that the individual projects are consistent with. I'm only listing in the presentation the upcoming fiscal year. However, there is a complete list of consistency matrix included in the packet for the whole five-year CIP. The improvements planned for our pools this coming fiscal year is somewhat limited, and it's mainly to upgrade some of the equipments that have been failing, with additional improvements planned for the second year of the CIP. The second project is mainly funded by a grant of $952,000 from the Climate Implementation Grant, with additional $118,000 of local match that will be accomplished over a two-year period to transition our fleet to zero emission vehicles, as well as implement the infrastructure improvements for, like, EV charging stations and so forth, which are consistent with a number of goals under the community services and health and safety, because of the improvements to the environment, and sustainability element. The third project is targeting some deficiencies within city hall in particular, with the exception of the roof. This coming fiscal year, we're planning to improve some elements to better accommodate the staffing, such as changes in the offices and workstations on the first and second floors, as well as the front counters on both levels. And right now, there are issues at the doors on the other side, and this one, actually, that the rain seeps into the building, and it causes some molds, and we were having to remove some of the carpet and replace it. So improvements like that is needed and would be covered under this project. And again, it's consistent with the community services elements, a number of goals and policies. And please let me know if I need to slow down. I'm trying to be respectful of your time. Next slide, please. There are two park-related projects that are planned in fiscal year 2526. One would be an annual program that would improve conditions in the individual parks, such as lighting, playground equipments, providing shade areas. Most likely, in year 2526, we will be starting with the dock park, given the number of complaints that we've been receiving and identified deficiencies there. The second project would be to rehabilitate the soccer fields, including improvements to the irrigation system and the turf. Both of these projects are mainly consistent, again, with the community services, goals, and policies, as well as growth management. Next slide, please. The treatment plan has three blowers. One of them, we are replacing by the end of June, so in this fiscal year. And the two other blowers will be replaced in fiscal year 2526, so that they would be all same model, about the same age. And it would be easier to maintain them, because what we have out there now, that we don't even have, they don't produce the parts for these equipments anymore. So, and that would be consistent with the community services policies. The second project is intended to better serve our community in establishing a program, and we will be producing the guidelines for this program once the budget is approved later this month, to assist property owners in replacing their lateral sewer pipes that connects to the main. And the funding for this program is $150,000 for the upcoming year, and it's going to be decided most likely based on the financial means of the property owners, and whether they would qualify for the care program under PG&E, for example. We will identify the guidelines to help us. And this would be consistent with the health and safety elements, as well as community character, as well as other goals and policies. The third sanitary sewer project aims to reduce the pressure on the influent pipes, and that is intended to improve the conditions of our infrastructure and accommodate future years and the possibility to avoid flooding and other issues during the storms. Again, consistent with the growth management and community services. Next slide, please. The top two projects are, again, improvements to our treatment plan. One is to rehabilitate the secondary clarifier that's expected to cost about $425,000, and all sewer projects are funded by the enterprise fees. And that would assist us in working towards community services, goals, and policies. The second project on this slide would be to upgrade our lab that's currently in deteriorated state, and the cost for that is only $150,000. That's mainly for cabinets and for the sampling fridge and the specialized dishwasher, because some of the work will be done in-house, like the demolition and installation of the cabinets and so forth, will be done by our own crew to try to minimize the cost, which is, again, consistent with community services and growth management goals and policies. The third and last sanitary sewer project for fiscal year 2526 will rehabilitate or replace depending on the condition of the pump stations and the main pump lines under San Pablo Avenue and Hazel Street. consistent with the Community Services Goals, CS six and Policy CS one. Next slide, please. The stormwater project is mainly funded by Measure S, which is housed at the General Fund. So we wouldn't be able to to establish a lot this coming fiscal year. However, we will be pursuing a number of grant funds for future projects that we've identified. The first projects listed, it's intended to be an annual program actually for small-scale projects. For example, it floods almost yearly on the Dolores Court because of the condition of the stormwater pipe that connects to the creek. So that would be one of the projects we would start with to replace. And the second project is intended to meet state and regional requirements. For example, through the installation of trash capture devices and other upgrades. Not only within the public right of way to actually meet the targets, some of the work will be done on within private properties. So we were coordinating with the the various property owners. And these two projects are consistent with the Community Character, Community Services and Open Space Goals and Policies. Next slide, please. Majority of the efforts will be focused on road-related projects. One of the top priorities that was identified in the survey that was conducted under the Measure I had roadway rehabilitation as the top concern of the community, with sidewalks also close to the top. That's why there are eleven projects that focused on improving our roadway system, whether it's through roadway rehabilitation, ADA compliance measures, sidewalk upgrades and meeting any gaps within our network. Although the demand is quite high, so we will have to do it gradually. In the first year, the pavement rehabilitation, for example, would have an overall budget of three million two hundred and fifty thousand, mostly funded by vehicle impact fees. It's no longer potential. It's approved by council now, and gas tax. The second and third years would cover larger-scale projects with five million dollars each, because there is a plan to to have that financing paid annually through the Measure I. So we would be able to to tackle more out of our system. The second and third projects on this slide, they used to be combined, but we separated them because they they cover different types of work. The second project would be for sidewalk upgrades and possibly building sidewalks where deficient. And again, will have to be done gradually because the budget there is only two hundred thousand per year. The third project will tackle ADA compliant measures, such as curb ramps at intersections. And this also would be an annual program of a hundred and fifty thousand. These three projects are consistent, actually, with more goals and policies than what's listed on this slide. But it they include sustainability elements, Community Services, and other goals and and policies. Next slide, please. I I should mention that it's possible that we could potentially bundle projects under the pavement rehabilitation, combined with some funding from pavement, the pavement marking upgrades or the street lighting upgrades, depending on the needs as we tackle the various projects. And this slide mainly aims to to gradually improve other deficiencies within our transportation system. Since two thousand and seven, the state requires certain level of retroreflectivity in our pavement marking and signage, and we're quite behind. So the first project aims to improve that through an annual program for a hundred thousand. And I should mention, for example, as part of the pavement rehabilitation projects, after resurfacing the roads, we would establish the pavement marking to current standards, what was was the requirements. The second project will be to improve lighting gradually throughout the city. We have about fourteen hundred and twenty-five lights within Pinole. About two-thirds of those belong to PG&E, and one-third belongs to the city. The spacing are not standard and not consistent. The level of illumination also don't necessarily meet standards. So this annual program aims to gradually improve the lighting conditions and sense of safety in general for the community, including pedestrians and cyclists. The third project will upgrade our signals to be ADA compliant, upgrade the controllers, the battery backup, eventually upgrade the the software and be able to to monitor it and operate it from our offices. As of now, our signals are maintained and operated by the county. And these three projects, again, consistent with various goals and policy under the circulation elements, Community Services, and also Health and Safety, so various goals and elements. Next slide, please. The top project, the San Pablo Avenue Bridge. This is one of our primary projects that we're working on. It's mainly funded by federal and state and regional funds. And we recently were able to to make adjustments in coordination with WECTAC to the agreements that we would minimize our local match. It's mentioned here as a hundred thousand just to have some cash flow to be able to pay the consultants while we seek reimbursement. But as if it's it it's set up now that the grant funds would pay for for everything, including the local match. And it's mainly from STMP grants and HBP, Highway Bridge Program. We are expecting to complete the environmental review, NEPA and SEQA, by the end of this year, the end of fiscal year, with the design being initiated at the beginning of next year. The design is expected to take from a a year and a half to two years because it has a temporary structure, a temporary bridge that would support the flow of traffic while we build the permanent bridge. And the construction, I can tell there are maybe questions. I'll be happy to answer questions if if you'd like later on. And the construction is also expected to take approximately two years. And there is funding currently dedicated for construction from federal funds. The second project is also grant-funded through the Highway Safety Improvement Program with some local match that we're coordinating with the county for safety improvements at two pedestrian crossings across San Pablo to better serve pedestrians and cyclists. The third project is intended to be an annual program to reflect the community's needs in the design of the roadways through traffic calming and address their safety concerns and sense of security through physical devices, such as chokers, traffic circles, or whatever traffic calming devices would be suitable for the areas, with the priority for school areas near the senior center, community centers, and and so forth. And all these projects are consistent with the housing elements, the Community Services, Growth Management. Again, I did not list everything on this slide, but the the list included in the agenda packet is is more comprehensive. Next slide, please. These are the the two last projects under Streets and Roads. One is the annual maintenance for small-scale projects. And the city has been funding the the annual maintenance by three hundred and fifty thousand of the Measure funds annually. And this is like for potholing and this type of small-scale work being carried out by our own team. But this is mainly for rental of equipments, purchase of material, and and so forth. The second project would be to upgrade the two thousand and four ADA Transition Plan. And we're the in the process this month of applying for Safe Streets for All, grant, to assist us in not only updating the ADA Transition Plan, but also to develop complete street design guidelines for the city. The two thousand and four Transition Plan is is outdated. It includes improvements that are no longer applicable. And the standard plans and specifications have changed a number of times since. These two projects are consistent with the Community Services Goals and Policies. They are consistent also with the circulation element and with growth management. Next slide, please. As I mentioned in the beginning, there are two infrastructure assessments that are planned to be carried out in fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. One is to to develop the feasibility study, which is somewhat different than the work that was done before for recycled water. And the second would be to develop a storm drain master plan that will assist us in planning for future upgrades and improvements needed throughout the city. And the infrastructure assessments are consistent with Community Services, with Open Space, with Growth Management, with with various goals and policies and sustainability elements. Next slide, please. The five-year CIP was the prioritized projects under fiscal year twenty five, twenty six have been evaluated by the Finance Committee in April. And so far have been reviewed by city council on three different meetings. I believe they were on, yes, May sixth, May thirteenth, and June third. And we're expecting that the CIP would be approved on June seventeenth. There hasn't been any changes in in the last two meetings of city council. And we are here before you tonight to obtain your adoption of the resolution if if you agree that the CIP is consistent with the general plan elements. With that, I will be happy to answer any questions that you may you may have.
Thank you, Director Ilkhande, for the presentation. Now we will move to questions from the Commission, starting with Commissioner Bender.
I just have one question, and that relates to a project that's not in the fiscal year twenty five, twenty six, but I'm pleased to see it got kicked out to twenty eight, twenty nine. And that is the Senior Center Auxiliary Parking Lot. I saw a comment that apparent up there in the description. It talked about there was awarded a contract for the consultant for preliminary engineering and design of the parking lot. But I noticed that there's a hundred thousand in that twenty eight, twenty nine for the actual design. I think the question I have is, do you know how many parking stalls would actually be capable of being developed on that? Or is that still to be determined?
That is to be determined. And actually, the seeking of consulting services was before my time. And I should clarify that this project is currently on hold. And it may actually be used for different purposes, such as redevelopment, rather than establishing a parking lot. So this is yet to be seen.
Okay. Actually, Chair, I have one more, one more question about one of the ongoing projects, or at least it appears to be ongoing again, and that is the BNSF San Pablo Avenue Bridge. Do I understand you that the construction financing is gonna be sought through federal and state grants or monies?
Yes. What's being allocated currently, but not within the next few years, but it's it's being awarded, is twenty eight million for construction. We don't know as of yet the if that would be sufficient. So that would be determined through the design phase when the detailed construction cost estimate is is being prepared.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And and I do very much appreciate your your presentation.
Oh, thank you.
Very informative. And I'll reserve my comments for later, Chair.
Thank you. And Commissioner Uch.
Hi, I have one question specifically on the trapping calming program and also during the presentation, which, thank you for that, very informative. You mentioned that certain projects could be combined, right? How does that work exactly? Is this like on a basis of like approval of council specifically? Or in terms of like if they just seem aligned in purpose, depending on if your team deems it worthwhile?
It's a combination of both. Because any agreements with consultants or contractors have to come to to city council, depending on on the dollar amount. But the vast majority come to city council for approval. So to to answer that part of the question, yes, it would be subject to council approval. The reason that we may combine, it depends on the the functionality and the scope of the project. For example, the pavement rehabilitation project for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six is planning to cover Pinole Is planning to cover Pinol Valley Road Shay and Sarah. But Pinol Valley Road is two point eight miles. And it's planned as a complete street project, not just pavement rehab. There are safety issues in the vicinity of the schools, in the vicinity of the soccer field. So there will be some pavement marking and signage improvements. As well as physical traffic calming devices. So we are combining multiple purposes here. That could potentially utilize the funds from more than one project. If the project under the pavement rehabilitation project would not be sufficient. We are planning for Pinol Valley Road and probably the following year for the rest, which is tenant. That's a point eight miles. To eventually have a complete street projects accommodating pedestrian, cyclists, and auto traffic. Going through the whole lens of the city.
Thank you. And one more question then relating to that question is, I guess, with the traffic calming program. As stated in the presentation, will be starting, if adopted, in twenty twenty five. I know this later on, though it's starting next year, the Safe Route Schools Project. I'm guessing later on that could potentially just be folded in because, well, looking at the general plan and policy goals. And, you know, objectives of making safer streets. I feel like eventually that would just eventually also kind of be rolled in with the goal of making streets safer for pedestrians.
Yes, and that initially was actually part of. We initially recommended that it would start in fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. But because of the financial situation and because it's funded by Measure S. We had to reduce the amount of funds coming out of the general fund. Because, so we pushed it by one year. And I should mention that the pavement rehabilitation project, for example. There is a peak season for that, like six months, let's say. The rest of the projects are for the whole fiscal year. So whatever is not used under the pavement rehabilitation project. We would continue on working throughout the year and meeting the community's needs. We have a list of requests for the school safety related. As well as traffic calming related. And it's mainly in areas surrounding schools, within residential neighborhoods. So it's not necessarily on an arterial corridor like Pinol Valley. So we would like to address the transportation system from a broader perspective. To the extent possible throughout the year. But again, given the staff resources, the financial resources. We'll try to maximize the use of the available funds. And sometimes bundling projects make it more efficient. Because it goes under one contract rather than various contracts.
Thank you for the clarifications. And that's all my questions.
Thank you. And Commissioner Lam Julian.
Hi there, welcome. And thank you very much for that very thorough report. So regarding the private lateral sewer lines SS two four oh seven. I know several community members have, has reached out to PG&E. And it does not apply to the median income, which would exclude quite a bit of Pinol. So just putting it out there to maybe expanding that to be able to help homeowners. I've also had several community members reach out that PG&E has done work to, I guess. Cutting off residents switching over to electric and shutting off their gas lines. So then PG&E would come rip up the road, rip up the sidewalk to be able to access. That, I don't know what it's called. But when they do the repair, the sidewalk, they repair it with asphalt. And several folks have told me that that is not up to code. And they have reached out to PG&E several times without any updates to fix that. And then for improvements to the parks, just wanted to highlight the Health and Safety Code one one five seven two five one. Stating that tan bark should be about twelve inches underneath structures. Would like to highlight Nob Hill Park. The tan bark is pushed up around the, I guess, the base of it. But the intent of it being twelve inches would be to soften the fall from people in the play structure. And I honestly have had several people bring it to my attention. That they're concerned that the tamper hasn't been refilled in really quite some time. In just asking the city to maybe see on Old Town. For the mirror preservation, just again, community members wondering just if we can do community partnerships. To really bring into the community arts and programs, the schools, to then lower the cost. And have that partnership up and be able to represent the schools in the area. And that's, oh wait, and then if you could clarify the master plan for the facilities and real estate. Is this the first time that we have ever had one? Is that correct? We haven't had one before?
I will try to tackle your questions and please let me know if I miss any of them.
Sure.
With regards to the sewer lateral funding, the program that the city will establish to help the community. We haven't actually prepared the guidelines yet. I was just using it as an example. Because we would like to help the community that are in need first as a priority. But let's say at the individual properties, it would cost seven to eight thousand. The budget for the year is a hundred and fifty thousand. So hopefully, we will be able to help a significant number of property owners. I noted the Nob Hill Park. With regards to, yes, we need to fill, not just at. Even at the playground, at. The daycare area. Tiny thoughts.
Yes.
But we are trying to, we're checking on a grant fund that we currently have. If it were to apply for such a purpose of a purchase. So we may be able to target this improvement pretty soon.
Okay.
Without having to include it in the park upgrades. With regards to community partnership, I believe that the Community Services Director. Is working on that. And she's seeking a number of partnerships. Especially with the park that we're starting with in fiscal year twenty five, twenty six, the Dog Park. The funding here is only a portion of what we're expecting to receive.
So should organizations reach out to the Community Service Director?
Yes, please.
Okay. And then I think I might know an organization that would be able to help with the parks. To just make it more accessible, switching out from tan bark to, I think that's the rep rise. So then children and grandchildren would be able to access the park.
It's definitely safer for the children, yes, I agree.
Okay. And then follow up with the PG&E sidewalk situation. Should they reach out to, would the city be able to assist, kind of push, nudge things along with PG&E to get a response or?
Actually, I will have to explain this, this project a little bit more. The project that we're establishing here to improve the sidewalk conditions. This is again, aims at helping the property owners. Per state law, it's actually the property owner's responsibility to maintain the sidewalks. Even if there are trees that need to be removed. And when we establish these guidelines, I will provide all the sections from the code. To clarify the different responsibilities. With that being said, there are property owners that wouldn't be able to afford such an improvement. To remove trees, rebuild sidewalks, and so forth. That's why we are establishing this project. And I agree with your observation with the way PG&E. Treats sidewalks and pavement conditions, is bay mud as well. Because it's affecting our roadway network. And we're trying to work with them to get them to actually apply for permits. And give us the opportunity to inspect the work. Because we're not always notified. Actually, in most cases, we're not. Unless we're out there observing on our own and contacting them, sometimes we don't know. Yes, but that's the reality unfortunately.
Okay, alright. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Huet.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much Director for your report. My first question is regards to the staff report where it says that staff will be seeking out grant funds to supplement local funding sources to complete set projects. Can you share how the current political economic state has impacted the availability of grants in the future? And if any of the grants that we are currently receiving is at risk of being cut?
The grants that we are currently receiving are not at risk. We recently reported that the projects are active. Which is essential to keep the funding from being cut. Actually, on the various levels, not just federal or state, even regional. For example, the San Pablo Bridge was placed on hold. And we had to communicate with the front, throughout the hierarchy to show that it's not. And resubmit the environmental documents and clarify the dates and invoices. And to remove it from the inactive list. So yes, projects are being targeted because funding is now limited. With that being said, we've already made our case with regards to the ongoing projects. Funding under the various grant programs is also less than what it used to be. But the opportunities are still out there. We are planning to go after the Highway Safety Improvement Program. Or the Active Transportation, the ATP, the HSEP. This month we're working on the SS four A. We will tackle every opportunity we get. It's more competitive now because funding is less. So we have to make our case. And we're competing with cities that have designated disadvantaged areas. We have very small section in the northwest corner of the city. There are other jurisdictions that compete better simply because of the conditions. But we can only try our best.
Thank you, thank you. My next question is in regards to page sixty three, the Safe Routes to School Program or Safe Routes to School Project. It says the staff will address safety concerns. Can you please share what those concerns are if you know them? And if that is to be determined, can you share how those concerns will be discovered?
With regards to the safe routes to school?
Yes.
The concerns that are being brought forward, whether from the schools, the school districts, or parents. Some are within the public right of way, some are within the site. For example, we're helping Pinol Middle School currently. To redesign the parking lot differently. To better accommodate staff parking away from the drop off and pickup area and make it more efficient. This is not under the city's responsibility. This is just to help them out. But officially, we cannot go in there and do the changes ourselves unless we get permission. From the school district. Actually, the schools are under the state architect. So there is a different approval process, but we're trying to support them. They are also asking for a new crosswalk with an RRFP in front of the school. Which would be a mid-block location. We wouldn't establish it without a traffic control device to secure the safety. So it's requests like that. Improvement to signage, pavement markings, improvements to sidewalk conditions and accessibility. And sometimes it's just a fear of speeding. So it depends on the area.
And what is the avenue in which staff is receiving these concerns? Is it that the parents or the community members reaching out to staff directly? Does it go to the school district and the school district shares with the city? What is the way for collecting this type of feedback from the community?
Everything that you just mentioned. We receive concerns from the school, from the school district. The community members reach out to us directly by email, by reporting it on the website, by calling. We receive the concerns from various avenues.
Do you know if any of the schools have undergone a walk audit?
I am not certain that they did that in the past. I am not too concerned about the walk audits because we can support them. We have the expertise to do this type of work. And we even can get free service. Like there is a group out of UC Berkeley that assists with these walk audits. But it's, we need to be ready to implement the improvements. We need to have the resources to implement the improvements. That's why there is a level of managing expectations a little bit. And the improvements will need to be established gradually.
And if I can just add a quick thing regarding the school. Usually when those, when those studies are done, usually we're not notified. We're usually notified in the rears when they've already done the study. They've already gone through the consultant, got the consultant done. Because the school districts can act as their own lead agency on projects. So we're not necessarily involved in all of those. We probably should be, but we're not all involved in the studies that they do. It's usually when all of a sudden they've done all these studies and they find that they can't fund all of these projects. Then they come to the city and ask, hey, can you guys help us with this? And usually that's when we join with the Safe Routes to School Programs with the, with the school districts. Because it's very difficult for them to do offsite improvements. So that's kind of, I wanted to add that part of it too as well.
Yes, and it is different from one community and one jurisdiction than us. It's what the community gets used to, right? But we are planning, for example, in January of this coming year. To team with the Police Department for an Office of Traffic Safety Grant. To be able to start a program for traffic safety education. Where we go to the various schools and to start to enhance what we can offer our community.
Great, thank you. And my next question is on page sixty five about the city's street light upgrades. I understand that the funding is supposed to be to make sure that the spacing and illumination standards for the city-owned lights is up to standards. But what about the PG&E-owned ones? Are those up to standard with the spacings and illumination requirements?
Actually, the city doesn't currently have standards. We follow the state's standards. We will be developing our own. And the improvements will be established regardless whether it's PG&E or city. The spacing, for example, between PG&E lighting, because they're dictated by the location of the utility poles. So let's say they are three hundred feet apart. And the spacing needs to be a hundred and fifty feet to give sufficient like illumination. and fifty feet to give sufficient like illumination. It's not going to stop us from adding that street light in between. So regardless of who owns the lights, and I should also mention that we're upgrading the street lighting through development projects, like the Apean Project, for example, will be installing new lights at about one hundred and fifty feet spacing on Apean and on Canyon along the borders of the project site. So we try to find every way possible to improve lighting and we're now working with PG&E. We started quarterly coordination meetings because they have their own programs that we can benefit from to improve the lighting conditions. And we can also save on the charges that we pay monthly on the energy usage by benefiting from the various programs and categorizing our usage differently. So we're trying to tackle it from different aspects of.
Right, thank you. Last question. I noticed that each project has a priority score and if a project does not have a priority score, does that mean it's not a priority or does that mean that it's still to be determined?
Actually, this year, we did not follow the priority score that much. In the past, it was prioritized that way, even the unfunded projects were also prioritized. But although we used similar factors like availability of funding, the funding source and the level of importance and need of the project, we did not necessarily score them. We just shortlisted the projects that needed to start sooner rather than later for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. For example, projects that are grant-funded, these had to be continued and had to stay on schedule. We tried to minimize any projects that again funded by Measure Fund and like funded by the General Fund, because the Measure Funds, Measure S is housed in the General Fund. You will see that we have six different sewer-related projects because they are funded through enterprise fees, so it's not impactful to the city budget per se. And there is sufficient accumulation in funds within the enterprise fees. So we didn't necessarily rank them as per previous years, we just wanted to accomplish as much as we can given available resources.
Thank you.
Vice Chairman.
Thank you. So I guess for my first, I'd like to start like my fellow commissioners and thank you for your presentation Director El Gendy. I know you've gotten some practice in giving it to the Finance Subcommittee and the City Council a few times, but you've done a pretty good job at it and listing out the various I guess with regards to the priority score, my first question is, is there a particular reason that staff decided not to use the priority score?
The priority scoring in past years weren't really followed. Even in the unfunded projects had high priority scoring, some of them, but they were never pursued. So it was clear from assessing the various projects that certain projects stayed on the books year after year after year, despite that they had a high scoring. But it was really dictated by whether we have the staff resources or the funding to do the project. That's why we tackled it, at least for this coming year, we tackled it from that perspective. We were able to include eight projects between the stormwater and the sewer because we're adding the associate engineer position funded by the enterprise fees that would be able to assist us with those eight projects. And that's about the capacity per engineer. So we divided up the number of projects, which fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, as I mentioned, has twenty-four projects and I will be part of the work directly on some of the projects and two infrastructure assessments based on the availability of staffing and the availability of funding. Did I answer your question?
Yes, thank you. So I've also got other questions. Let's see. For PA nineteen oh one, the soccer field rehabilitation, wasn't there basically community grants to cover the soccer field or was that a different soccer field that was renovated?
Actually, the soccer field were rehabilitated, but did not cover everything. The irrigation system was not upgraded, some sections would actually have to be replaced. That's part of the reason that the turf deteriorated fairly quickly. Yes, the soccer field, especially the one off of Pinole Valley, is heavily used by various groups and community teams, but the fact that we don't have the infrastructure to support the new turf didn't help. And we're in the process now actually in replacing some sections of that turf. And we're going back and rehabilitating the irrigation system itself.
Okay, so if I'm understanding right, that basically new turf was put in before the underlying irrigation infrastructure was there to support it?
Yes, the grant funding covered specific type of improvement, which was the turf improvements last time around.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that point. On page number forty-eight, SS two four zero seven, the private sewer lateral question, I'd like to follow up a little bit on Commissioner Lamb Julian's questions with regards to equity and potential caps on costs for any given project, because some sewer lateral repairs are going to cost more, potentially much more than others, just in terms of the raw footage of lateral that'll need to be repaired or replaced, some houses are simply physically farther back from the street or others. Is the city planning on implementing caps on how much can go to any one project?
Probably, to be honest with you, we haven't actually sat down and started thinking of the guidelines, but probably for equity purposes, we would place a cap.
All right, and when the city is creating those guidelines, is there a particular process for deciding what equity questions to include and not to include, or is that just hasn't been determined yet because you haven't gotten that far in the process?
We have not gotten far in the process yet, but we will soon start working on it and will be happy to bring it forward for review if desired.
All right, and then... So on page number sixty-nine, R O two four zero three, Old Town Traffic Calming, I know that that project is basically scheduled to start in fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven, is that just due to staff capacity limits?
Yes and no. The Old Town or improvements in general to San Pablo Avenue will be mainly following the San Pablo Avenue Bridge construction, because that project is going to create a significant amount of truck traffic. The behavior of traveling within this area would be different during the construction. So we don't want to implement improvements now and then change it, like get it impacted later.
That makes sense.
Also, whether the lane configuration would be considered to different cross-sections in the future, this is something that's not necessarily ideal to evaluate right now because we're working with Caltrans to build a four-lane bridge. We wouldn't want to consider implementing a road diet that would affect their decision regarding the bridge. The bridge will live with us for many years to come. So ideally, we would tackle San Pablo Avenue following the bridge project. With that being said, we will try to improve the overall environment, especially in the downtown area, through string lighting, curb ramp improvements, maybe some street furnishings, but nothing drastic yet.
Okay, so on page number seventy-four, R O two three zero one, Road Rehabilitation.
Yes.
And this is maybe stepping a little bit outside of what we're allowed to talk about, so Dave, feel free to cut me off here if I'm going over the line, but...
It's perfectly fine.
I note that the potential vehicle impact fee is listed for FY twenty-five, twenty-six only, and it's not listed going forward in future years. Is that because it would basically be converted into the basis for the debt financing or is there another reason?
This hasn't been fully determined yet, because the actual amount of debt financing is estimated at this point, that it would be four million in fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven and four million in fiscal year twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and then it goes down. But we didn't even mention Measure I, because we wanted to have sufficient funding to pay towards the debt financing. So it could possibly be a combination between the vehicle impact fees and the Measure I. A portion of Measure I would be dedicated for roads, I believe it's about four hundred thousand. So this will be assessed in more details in the future.
Right, I get that, at least some of that is just, you know, future fiscal years. I was just surprised to see the potential vehicle impact fee only existing in the first year and then not continuing forward, because to my understanding it was going to be one point two million for the lifetime of the franchise agreement, which is fifteen years, one point two million per year to be more specific.
Yes, yes. And the reason that we're pushing for it in the first year is because the scope of the pavement rehabilitation was too limited based on the input from the city council that would not be sufficient to achieve as much as we would like to achieve in the first fiscal year.
Sorry, I'm probably not stating my question correctly.
Yeah.
So I get that's why the vehicle impact fee is listed in the first year. What I'm not understanding is why it's not there in subsequent years. So like, for example, in FY twenty-six, twenty-seven, there's a blank for potential vehicle impact fee and so on for the rest of the fiscal years in the five-year plan.
It could be in following fiscal years, but it would either be dedicated towards the payments of the debt financing or directly for the payments towards the project, but it will be there.
Okay.
And the vehicle impact fees was just approved on June third, so the actual details of how it's going to be used in the future will still be worked out in future years. But what I can assure you is that it would be dedicated for roadway improvements, that's the sole purpose of that fund.
Right, it's a restricted fund, it can't be used for general purposes.
Yes.
Let's see. On page number seventy-seven, the description says that unfunded portions of this project appear in the unfunded list, but it looks like from the various grants and expected to be grant-funded, that by the time you get to FY twenty-seven, twenty-eight, it's all planned out to be funded. Are there still portions that are not funded?
Could you please share with me the project itself?
R zero one seven one zero, the San Pablo Avenue Bridge over BNSF Railroad?
Yes, it is mentioned this way, because we are aware of the twenty-eight million that's being planned for the project out of the highway bridge program. We are not, we don't know the exact cost estimate for the construction yet, so there may be additional sources of funding. The reason is not listed as part of the project because it would have skewed the overall table for the funding. Right now, as it is, it's not identified for a specific year. If you look at the MTC website, it shows future allocation, but not a specific year. Makes sense?
Yes, that makes sense, and MTC hasn't actually locked in the funding yet. Okay, my next question is actually on the next page, page number seventy-eight, with regards to IN two three zero one, the Facilities and Real Estate Master Plan. Given that having a list of all the city's facilities and which ones are available for a potential sale or alternative use would, I think, allow for more revenue to be available for other projects, is there a reason why it keeps getting pushed back year after year after year?
No, it was just, it was just decided based on the availability of funding. And actually, I am also in favor of this particular master plan because of how much we're finding out every single week or every single month of the conditions of the various facilities that require replacements. Ideally, we would find out more details about the individual facilities and what we need to do in a year from now and five years from now and so forth. However, it's just, we had to select out of the five infrastructure assessments and this master plan had to be pushed by one year.
I guess I have further comments on that, but that leads more to the comments side rather than the questions side, so I'll leave them for now, let's see. I'm also going to have comments on various other items, but again, those are comments, not questions.
If I may supplement, Commissioner Menas, if you notice the two infrastructure assessments that we picked are funded by enterprise fees, not by measure funds, and that was a factor in why those two were selected.
Okay, that is a relevant point, thank you. And I think that's all my questions. Okay, that is a relevant point, thank you. And I think that's all my questions.
Thank you, and thank you, Director Gundy, for your presentation, very informative. Um, so my questions had been answered by previous commissioners, but I still had some of my questions of my own. Um, a lot of the funding, it looks like it's going to kind of sewer sanitary and, and roads. And I was just kind of wondering, is the expenses received, um, the expenses for the sewer and sanitary, is that balanced compared to the revenue that we received from funding or grants or whatever? Or is there kind of like a deficit there in, in maintenance costs?
Uh, yes, uh, if um, uh, i- i- if you look at the account for, uh, which is another section of the budget, but under the enterprise fees, uh, we have accumulation of over twenty million in that account because we haven't been very active uh in pursuing capital projects um for sewer sanitary. Uh, that's why we're, we're trying to, to catch up, and the funding is available.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Um, another question that I kind of had was kind of about road rehabilitation. Does this kind of, does this kind of encompass po- fixing potholes, filling cracks, that kind of thing? Or is it kind of, does it include repaving?
Uh, it includes repaving. Uh, the pavement rehabilitation uh depends on the condition of the roadway. Uh, the potholing is typically the first step, uh, but depending on the pavement condition, it could be a slurry seal, it could be a cape seal, or it could be a full reconstruction. So this is, uh, other than the, the annual maintenance that's being handled by our own team as just for potholing, this is the more comprehensive work uh that we will be tackling in our roadway network.
And is this work contracted out, or is it done by the city?
Contracted out, yes. Managed by the city, contracted out.
Okay, okay. Um, is there any complete repaving that's gonna be part of the, the road re- rehabilitation plan? Any main arteries or kind of small, smaller streets?
Uh, regardless of the treatment, uh, this will cover the whole width of the roadway. So even for slurry seal, it would cover the whole width of the roadway.
Okay.
Uh, i- if you, the question is regarding reconstruction, um, likely not in the first year because roadway reconstruction is quite expensive. And the amount of funding may not be sufficient even for one road.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, so it, it may be pushed, depending on what we can afford.
Yeah, do you know what the cost per mile is for complete repaving?
Uh, it's, it, it varies, but it's, it's actually several million.
Okay, I just wanted to know, just curious.
It varies, it's a lane mile rather than roadway mile.
Hmm, okay. Um, and I believe that would be all of my questions. Are there any other questions from sta- from the commission for staff? Sounds good, and then we will move on to our public comment section. Do we have any public comment in person or online? Any such, anybody who would like to make a comment on this item?
There's no one online right now.
No one online, all right. Um, give it maybe a few more seconds if anyone decides to join in. All right, and then, so then that will close our public comment, and then we will go on to comments for in further deliberation within the commission, and starting with Commissioner Lam Julian. Any comments?
No further comments, thank you.
Commissioner Hui?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So I wanted to go back to the Safe Routes to School project again. Um, in another life, I had the pleasure to work for a city um on the peninsula, and it was fabulous. And Safe Routes to School was actually under my purview, it was under my department's purview. And I understand that it is traditionally, it is the school district who engages in the walk audits. But I would be remiss if I didn't advocate for the city to at least consider or to bring it to the school's attention. Um, I understand that the city is equipped to respond with the concerns that you've al- that you've already been diligently collecting, and that is wonderful to hear, the collaboration, the willingness to help out our um school district. Um, but as mentioned, you know, there is a group, it sounds like, that has been identified that does walk audits with the budget constraints. Unfortunately or fortunately, it was pushed back another fiscal year to July first, twenty-twenty-six, and so that's plenty of time to gear up for a walk audit if that was still an option. Um, what I really loved about the walk audits that we would do in partnership with our school district was, one, it just helped in, helped to strengthen that relationship with our school district. The second was, it invited community members to raise their concerns. Even though it sounds like they're doing a pretty good job of bringing it up to the city's attention, um, there is a difference between working on communities and working with communities. And Pinol has repeatedly, over and over and over again, been exemplary, exemplary in um ensuring that we work with our communities and inviting our community members to the table. Um, and I've also seen the results of said walk audits to be used as supplements to assist cities in their grant applications. And so this could definitely help to make our applications more competitive as the landscape becomes increasingly competitive. And so I just wanted to say in conclusion that the walk audit, again, there's a three-prong benefit that could come with this, strengthen our relationship with our school district, invite our community members to the table, and then finally supplement, make a great supplement for competitive applications for our grants. Thank you.
Vice Chairman.
All right, so I have a few comments. The first is just in terms of the overall typographical layout of this packet. Page number thirty-one of eighty-nine, I'm not sure what size the font is there, six-point font, potentially going as low as four-point for the footnotes, but it's barely legible. I would suggest either splitting out the streets and roads thing to a separate column or turning the table sideways so it's more visible. Most of the other columns are more manageable, but that one is challenging to read. Secondly, and this is a sort of ongoing point of concern that I have with regards to Project F A two-three-zero-two, the Plum Street Parking Lot Improvements. I brought this up the last time this project was brought before the planning commission in the prior fiscal year. This is on page thirty-six of eighty-nine. I note that the design is described as a chain-link fence with security gates. And what I discussed with the police departments at the Pride event was whether or not a chain-link fence would be sufficiently secure to, you know, meet policy C S two-point-six. And it was the police depart- it was the opinion of the members of the police department that I spoke to there that it would not be sufficiently secure, and they agreed with my thoughts that, you know, chain-link fence is pretty trivially bypassed. People can cut through it, people can climb over it, that perhaps wrought iron would be superior as a margin, so. Is the city still planning to use chain-link fence for F A two-three-zero-two?
I- if I may respond to, to, to the comments now.
Yeah, yeah, please go ahead.
Uh, with regards to the parking lot, that was part of the reason that it was pushed. Uh, because um, a chain, uh, uh, this is the way it was described from previous versions of that project. Um, but in, in, I, I know, and, and also, uh, uh, the, the chief is well-aware that that's not an adequate plan. And it will cost more than what's being specified under this project. Not just for the fencing, but the, the actual redesign of, of the parking lot itself, the pavement conditions, uh, i- if we were to provide some bicycle parking, and so it, it, it's a completely almost different scope than what's being provided under the project, which was one of the main reasons that it was pushed for a, a more detailed assessment. Uh, with regards to your other comment about the, the font, I fully agree with you. I, I will try to orient it differently. Uh, with regards to the, uh, the comment a- about the, the walk audits, if I may share, in, in a previous life, I was Division Zero Program Manager for the City of San Jose. I did quite a bit of walk audits, uh, so I'm, I'm in full support. Uh, and it doesn't necessarily have to be initiated by the school or the district. Actually, i- it was mostly initiated by the city, and I would like us to pursue that in the future as well for the City of Pinol schools.
All right, so the, the reason why I'm focusing, at least to start with my comments on F A two-three-zero-two is because in the prior general plan cycle, we struck those goals and policies. Policy, I believe, C S two-point-six in particular is not being applicable to the proposed project. And now it's back using basically, let me double-check to make sure that. Yeah, I think policy, the problem, and we went over this the last time we discussed this, is that policy to, C S two-point-six fits, but goal C S two doesn't because it doesn't actually maintain a high level of public safety the way that it's currently designed. So if we don't have goal C S two there, we can't have policy C S two-point-six.
I understand.
And then, let's see. I guess it meets goal C E five, providing adequate parking and loading facilities while encouraging alternative means of transportation. I'm not sure how we're supposed to define adequate here, but I'm going to note that I, that we strike some of the general plan goals and policies associated with this element later on. I think C E five might be able to survive, though. So I want to note my appreciation to the Community Development Department for finding a general plan goal, finding that actually does fit with this project as opposed to in prior years, and that they're quite concerned working on redesigning it.
And for, for the disclosure, I, I probably should have listened to the meeting uh from last year uh because uh I, I continued with some of the goals and, and policies for some of these projects uh without listening to your comments from last year, so maybe that's, that's why.
Yeah, I mean, for most of the projects, there, there wasn't an issue with the particular goals that were chosen to implement the general plan. It's just that one particular project I've got some issues with. You wouldn't necessarily have known, being new to this whole process. Let's see, other comments? So I feel got addressed under questions. So I guess following up on some of the prior questions with regards to R O two-five-zero-three, the city's streetlights upgrade, page number sixty-five. When the new standards are developed, like, let's say the city says, hypothetically speaking here, that it's going to require uh one, one streetlight every hundred-and-fifty feet or so, is that going to create an obligation of a city, or is that going to create an obligation on Pacific Gas and Electric?
Uh, the, uh, I should mention that the standard plans and specifications uh would be developed uh to, to be consistent with the state. Um, but part of the reason uh that we would like to do that is because we would like to uh establish uh specs for the downtown area uh with different type of illumination, with different uh spacing between trees and so forth. And the obligation would be on the city, not, not P G and E. And unless there is a, an opportunity working with P G and E to use some of their programs. Uh, but as we uh redevelop, as we pursue capital projects, we would follow uh the, the approved standard plans and specifications by that time.
Thanks for clearing that up, let's see. That was a question, that was a question, that was a question. Just as more of a comment on page number eighty-two with I N seventeen-o-three, I'm glad to see that the city is finally moving forward of a storm drain master plan like the other plan I mentioned earlier. During questions, I've been advocating for the city to implement that one in particular due to the state's requirements with regards to storm drain capture and all of that stuff going on. So I'm glad to see the city is finally, I see there's not actually a construction or contingency point put in here, but at least beginning planning for it in the upcoming fiscal year.
Yes.
And that's all of my comments for now. Thank you.
Um, Plan Manager Han, I'm just a clarifying question here. Um, if the commission decides to find one, that one of these policies is not um contingent with the general plan, would, would this have to come back to us, or would be able to strike something out?
No, what it does is it goes as a recommendation to the city council, and then the city council makes the final decision. So you would be recommending that, if, if you do not go with a, a, a policy, you would just recommend that that policy be stricken from the, as not consistent, that the project's policy selection was not consistent with the general plan, and then we would forward that to the pla- we would forward that to the uh city council, and then they would act accordingly.
Then we'll just pa- we would just pass something tonight, and then with a little tag on it?
Yes, if that's the, if that's the majority of the commission, yes.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner Bender?
Uh, yes, my comments um are on two of the projects. One was the Plum Street Parking. Um, I'm not gonna repeat uh what Commissioner Menas said because um I have uh some of what he's identified as some of the policies and so forth and so on, really do not apply, and we did discuss that. Um, I was the early advocate for the chain-link fence, not doing what it's supposed to do um in terms of actually providing the real security, as well as it's frankly aesthetically a bad look. And I won't go any further on that. The only other issue I have with that project, though, is um it says here about twenty-five spaces would be configured for city-only use, and that may be old information. Um, because I think the current parking lot has like seventy or seventy-one spaces, somewhere around there. Um, I've been sort of concerned about having what would have been like a third of that parking space suddenly disappear from this area, which actually is, if, comes the closest to being the most congested in the Old Town area. Several weeks ago, I went to that, uh, I had to go to that parking lot to park, and there were like four spaces available. This was around noon time or so. Um, a little over a week ago, I went and I got the last space. And I won't go into what happened last Friday because I came to get my package after returning from shopping, and I couldn't find any parking around here. And I even went over to the lot, and it was completely full, and I just, and then I realized the doors are open to St. Joseph's, so they were probably having some end-of-school year, whatever, so there was no parking available. That just sort of concerns me based on the numbers that I've seen here. My only other caveat is then, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna pretend to be a civil engineer, but if you're gonna be completely reconfiguring that parking lot, it brings up the whole C-three requirements and so forth and so on, and what that implications are of that. The second uh parking lot I wanted to talk about was the senior center auxiliary parking lot. Um, I live close to that area, and I said it last year, and I said it to council, and I will say it again, I have, I go by there every day, seven, seven days a week, rain or shine, because I jog through that area. And I've seen the main parking lot full at times. I've seen the auxiliary rarely full, and of course, people also can park along the streets there. Um, I've never quite understood this project, um, in all honesty. I'm glad to see it's been pushed out further. Um, I'm kind of aware that there's maybe not a consensus about this one. And I'll just leave it at that. I'm kind of aware that there's maybe not a consensus about this one, and I'll just leave it at that. I do want to circle back to one thing about the Plum Street Parking Lot. I just, during a council meeting, Councilmember Tom has brought up the issue, instead of the fence, why not consider installing cameras? I don't know if that is the real solution to the issue, but it was certainly a kind of an interesting point to bring up. And I just wanted to say in general, thank you very much since you've been here. I very much appreciate how you've actually tackled doing a real prioritization of the projects from that list of God knows how many, and that keeps adding on year after year, and some of them seem to be overlapping. But I do appreciate it, this sort of reprioritization and sort of dropping that old other prior version, which as you said was incomplete or not being entirely followed. But to me, the prioritization now is based on both fiscal and sort of reality conditions. The reality conditions being, and I don't want to go too much into this for professional reasons, but when you have things that are not complying with federal, state laws, the building code, and those things are not being given any sort of priority, and in fact, they haven't even existed until this sort of reorganization of the priorities. I'm just really been pleased because I think Pinole is finally trying to move into the 21st century on some very, very important issues, especially with regards to accessibility and levels of safety, and I'm not talking about police, I'm talking about just road safety. That's my, that's all I'm going to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Uch.
No further questions.
Any, so that goes back to me. So one comment that I kind of did want to put out there is that I think that the city's spending a lot of money on roads, but it feels like a lot of the time we're just kind of repaving, sorry, we're just kind of filling potholes a lot of the time, and then I think that, you know, it's with a lot of the Measure I funding, hopefully coming in the next couple of years, it could be something that repaving the whole city could be something that could be included. I know that that's an incredible tall task, but I think that it could be done, broken up. I probably would even suggest maybe if the city could potentially purchase the equipment to have a paving team that's constantly working. But I know that that might not, isn't really feasible at the moment, but I know that that could be something for the future. That way, we could, the city could constantly be repaving, repaving the whole city one day, even if it takes 10, 20 years. And I think that, I think that's kind of important because I kind of think about a lot of the things that we kind of think about, like safe streets and complete streets projects, we kind of have the, if we're kind of completely redoing like our main artery streets, it kind of lets us the opportunity to kind of reengineer them and take a look at them like, oh, like, hey, we're going to be spending 200, 300, $500,000 to completely redo a street, but, you know, maybe we could completely repave the street and include some of those modifications instead of trying, you know, spending the money twice in a way, if that makes sense. I know that San Pablo Avenue is a corridor that's been, has been a lot of contested, a lot of opinions on what should happen there, whether there should be a protected bike lane, engineering something to slow down the cars. I'm a big proponent that I'm a big proponent that streets kind of have to be engineered to slow down cars because if it's two-lane, wide lanes, people will blast through at 50 miles per hour versus like if there's something that people will be scared to hit, or if people think that they're going to hit like a baller or something, that that, you know, that will probably slow people down. But, you know, that's just thinking that it could be an opportunity to plan for the, plan for the future, hopefully one day. Any other questions or comments from the commission? Commissioner Lam Julian.
Yes. The pedestrian improvements at the Tenant Avenue near the railroad tracks, just, I would ask staff to look, to broaden that scope to safety in light of the incident, the fatality that occurred there, understanding that during the warmer months, a lot of families, strollers go through there, and there is growing concern about, is that really a safe place for them to continue to have that beautiful open space? I mean, it's a beautiful breeze on a hot day. But just to look into that as well, in addition to the parking, to connect it and what have you, but just to just expand on that safety aspect of it. Since it is, it continues, I understand they got the person and what have you, but just, it is a growing concern, and people are looking at, to going to other parks instead, and we just want to have something available for families here.
If I may?
Yes, yes, please, of course.
I know I kept you for a while, I apologize. With regards to the tenant project, that actually was one of the projects that was also placed on hold, and we worked with Caltrans recently to reactivate it. So we are pursuing it. And hopefully you will see it sooner rather than later. With regards to safety conditions on San Pablo, yes, it's one of the priority safety corridors. If you look at the heat map from our local road safety plan and the collision statistics, I wonder how drivers would drive at these speeds on San Pablo. It's just that the timing of the improvements. And we will try to change the overall environment with some crossing improvements, some ADA-type compliant improvements. So we will try to improve the overall environment for now, until we tackle it as a complete street projects and revitalization projects to support the businesses on both sides of the corridor.
Of course, thank you.
With regards to equipment, I'm sorry.
No, you can go ahead. Go ahead, please.
With regards to the equipment, our team doesn't currently have necessarily the, all the expertise that has to do with pavement rehabilitation. Some of the equipments are quite expensive. They're going through different types of training currently, including inspection, for example, of the different types of treatment. We are going to try to save on the equipment side, though. Like each time we rent a roller, we spend $4,500. We're in the process of purchasing a roller, which is $30,000. So we are looking at means of improving the way we do things, and a cheaper way of doing things. But I cannot really promise that our own team would be out there repaving the roadways within the next few years. It takes time for them to build that knowledge and for us to have the equipments to reach that point. So it will be contracted out for a while. With regards to the two parking facilities, if I may clarify that, yes, that the information listed under the projects are old, and it wouldn't be improved from that scope. There will be changes. Because there is a need for redesign. We're aware of the level of demand for parking in that area, and we will try to maximize the supply and not impact the community by doing the improvements. Similarly, the parking lot for the PD, that's also going to be redesigned, cameras, we currently have cameras, but they are not doing the job fully. And even maintaining the data, we don't maintain the data for some time, so it doesn't serve the purpose. Even that system needs to be upgraded. With regards to the senior center parking, the future of that parking lot is currently unknown, and I hope it doesn't sound negative because there is so much potential for that area. But it's not decided currently.
Chair?
Thank you.
If I can make a comment?
Yes, please.
When you're talking about San Pablo Avenue, and you mentioned the businesses, I would like Public Works to also think about the residents. And I'm being self-serving because I'm one of those people who actually lives on that street. So, in full disclosure, but I do think there has been a tendency to think about San Pablo Avenue, it runs from, let's say, the Old Town Oak Ridge to Pinole Valley Road. I'm sorry, but there's a couple of us who live past that. And I can just say today, the cars, the number of cars that weren't even doing the 37 miles an hour.
Commissioner Bender, your mic.
That shows up in the road survey that was done. Those cars were doing like 45, and including some trucks going to a certain concrete place.
Any additional comments from the commission? All right. And Vice Chairman, did you have another comment?
I would like to make a motion at this point.
Okay, what is your motion?
I would like to move that we find the projects proposed of a capital improvement plan for fiscal years 25, 26 through fiscal year 29, 30 are consistent with the general plan with a modification to project FA 2302 to strike goal CS 2 and policy CS 2.6 from the list of general plans, goals, and policies that that project conforms with.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Huey.
Yes.
Commissioner Uch.
Yes.
Commissioner Lam Julian.
Yes.
Commissioner Bender.
Yes.
Vice Chairman is.
Yes.
Chair Sandoval.
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Gundy. Thank you for the presentation.
I appreciate you having me tonight, and I look forward to our collaboration in the future.
Thank you for coming, thank you for the presentation, and thank you for your service. All right, next up, we have the City Planner's Report. Plan Manager Hanam, do you have anything to report out?
Tonight, I've got just a little bit, a little bit, a couple of things. One is to let the commission know that probably in July, we will be having our public workshop for our safety and environmental justice element before it comes back to the commission, so we're going to hopefully get that to the commission in August is what we're aiming for right now. So we're looking forward to that. We're also looking at going out for some public workshops for the Parklet Program. We've kind of devised kind of the study, however, we want to go out and talk to the business owners again. We talked to them a long time ago regarding the policy and what, you know, some of the things they wanted to look at. So we're going to bring it back and just kind of do an overview and see what, see where we need to go with that program, so that'll be coming out. In terms of development projects, we're in the process of filing the final map for Apean Village, so we're getting all our signatures for the map. They've gotten all the bond improvements that they need and the subdivision improvement agreements, and so we'll be looking and moving that forward. We are working with the new owners of the Pinole Vista Project. We are renewing a law line adjustment that was done back in the, back when ROIC owned it, however, they never recorded it. So we're now working with the new property owner to get it changed up and get it to the new owner's name and get them to record it. Other than that, that's all I have tonight for you. Oh, one thing I wanted to bring up. You asked for an item regarding the APN 80 project. Justin and I are working on that, and hopefully we'll have something for you at the next meeting to take a look at. If not, the next meeting, the first meeting in July, to take a look at for a recommendation to the council based on based on your comments at the last, at the last planning commission meeting, so we're working on that as well. So unless you have any questions about any other projects, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission on the report? Vice Chairman is.
Yes, I still got a follow-up question. I know that in the initial sort of message we were sent about tonight's meeting, it was suggested that the PAL program was going to be discussed, but it looks like that's gotten shifted to a future meeting?
No, that'll be under communications. That'll be under the next item.
Oh, great.
I have some communications for you on that. I can't include in that part. Dave, if you have the slide, I mean, I can include it as part of my report. I was going to include it. I was going to include it as part of the communication, but I can, I can include it as part of my report. There we go, okay. So just kind of want to give you, after talking with Lily and going over the PAL program, these are kind of the, what's going to happen over the next, these are, these are all, this is kind of a draft schedule of what's, of what's going to happen over the next few months with the program. And again, they're free educational workshops to help for people to understand what, to make their home safer, to navigate the permitting process. So we'll be looking at, you know, foundations of the universal design. This will mostly be all be put on by the building department. So in the course of September, we'll be making homes accessible, kind of step-by-step processes, also navigating the permit process on how we, how we're doing it, because it is a different, it'll probably be a different process than what we currently do for building permits. And then, of course, more information regarding energy efficiency and hiring the contractors and all that. So that's kind of what the layout of the schedule for the Pinole Accessible Living Program is right now. And again, once those, once all of that starts happening, and then, of course, as you're making the homes accessible, and what the program is to do is to allow people to live in their homes longer. I mean, that's the main, main crux of the program. So whether it's, you know, installing grab bars, chairs, lifts for two-story houses, ramps, you know, other types of accessible, to make it, make a home more accessible, that's what we're kind of looking at. So just to make sure that they understand the permitting process of what we're going to do with that, and what needs, what's going, what they're going to need for the permit process. So that's, that's kind of where we're at right now, so. So this is just a brief schedule of what's going to be happening over the next three or four months with the PAL program. Hopefully that answers some of your questions. If not, I can hopefully answer, if not, I can take those questions back to the director.
Thank you. And did you have any specific questions on the PAL program from the commission? So Commissioner Bender.
If I could just make a comment about the thing, one component, under hiring contractors, you know, how to. One of the things that I, I encourage people is to contact the State Contractors Licensing Bureau because you will be sometimes shocked at what you may find there, and you will not want to deal with that party. That is one way to protect yourself, because with the smaller scale construction, you do come across, let's just say, certain characters, if I can put it that way.
Vice Chairman is, yes, I had a question?
No, this is more of a comment, actually. I wanted to thank you for bringing up the slide because it answers my question about, you know, why we haven't been discussing the permitting stop because you're going to be setting up a whole new permitting infrastructure around this whole process that it makes sense you simply can't tell us yet what doesn't exist yet.
Commissioner Lam Julian.
Just feedback, so the home and safety emergency preparedness. The City Concord is having a safety fair, like a big emergency preparedness. I think next month, I can double-check my notes and let you know, as well as DDS, Development to Disabilities from the state, they do actually have a department that does emergency preparedness. And they're regularly giving tutorials and information and presentations. But that would be someone to reach out as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments on the PAL program or Commissioner Han, I'm sorry, Plan Manager Hanam's report? Commissioner Bender.
I have one question for Planning Manager. Has Pinole Shore's 2 ever filed for a building permit?
Not yet. They are in the process of working with Confire at this particular point. They've got some issues that they've got to handle regarding fire flow, and so I'll be meeting with them tomorrow, and hopefully they've gotten those solved. However, they are. However, they are working on their grading plan, their, their grading plans. And the reason why they haven't submitted their building permit plan, their building plans yet is because depending on the, what Confire comes back with will, could change the, the, the design of the building, not the design, but the interior structure of the building. It'll change the building plans quite a bit. So whether it's enhanced sprinklers, additional concrete walls, I mean, just different, different things, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, moving to our Commissioner's report, Commissioner Lam Julian, do you have anything you'd like to report?
None at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Huey?
No, thank you.
Vice Chairman?
This is more along the lines of a public policy comment. So I'm not sure whether that would fit better under Commissioner's report or communications.
I would say communications in terms, you can do it under your report, that's okay. I mean, we don't.
Okay. So one thing that I noticed, and this is sort of tying into public transit in this region, which sort of ties into our broader goals and consciousness is that usually when you're traveling on BART in particular, but also in a number of other agencies, you're paying more the longer you travel. But I was recently in the LA region and I noticed that basically you could travel 40 miles from like LAX to Anaheim for $1.75 because they have caps on the overall pricing. And I'm wondering whether it would be feasible for the Metropolitan Transportation Commission and the various public transit agencies sort of under its purview to consider a shift away from sort of higher fare box collection rates to a different funding system, especially given the overall decline in ridership at the BART level. So that's more my sort of public policy question slash commentary.
I can actually kind of answer that through my other line of work. Other, the state, there have been discussions around moving towards like a subsidized system, but there's just no funding for it.
And also the, the, the transit agencies are also trying to, because of state funding, they're also trying to make sure they can maintain that 10% fare box ratio. And most of the transits, they need that to be able to get a lot of their, the, the other 90% of their funding. So as part of their, that's, that's probably the issue that you're saying at the state level that they're, that they're having problems with funding that. So that's the other reason why I think the, the trips get more and more expensive is they're trying to recover that 10% fare box ratio.
Yeah. Funny enough, I cover transportation issues in a different role. But, but yeah, Bay Area transit agencies are very reliant on fare box a lot more than they kind of should be to be kind of sustainable. And that's kind of their, why they're in the fiscal cliff, in my opinion, why they're in the fiscal cliff that they're kind of in now. New York has a, has a completely different model where I think they, they heavily subsidize like the, the New York City subway, completely different system. They're not very reliant on fare boxes because the state's subsidizing it. But that could be, you know, something that California could do. It's just, we don't have the money.
I know in an all role that I'm on, that they are working in East County on a pilot program just exploring caps for fares for folks with disabilities. And then hopefully to expand it soon. But there is a transportation board that you can sit on those meetings or public meetings. But that's something that they're trying to, to work out. And they're piling it right now in East County for folks with disabilities and seniors to see if they're maybe able to expand it to West County and all of Contra Costa.
Commissioner Uch, you wanted to add something to that?
Yeah, I was gonna just add some things on the discussion on public transit with, yeah, the issue with, I would say, BART, especially when it comes to funding, especially with them now being in a, I believe, $90 million deficit. If they were gonna try to really do, say, reduce fare box to at least just be a flat rate across the board sadly, that would require a lot of funding from both regional, state and maybe federal sources because it doesn't help also BART is a very unique system compared to other metros. Like, let's say, even LA where they can run their system, run a fare box especially a lot lower because they use lighter trains and use standard tracks because generally tracks are standard gauge roughly, I believe, six feet. BART is a little over that. And so that further increased cost and maintenance with, with BART just being kind of generally more expensive to run and with how we fund transit, especially in the Bay Area, it's just very challenging. And compared on the comment on New York, the reason, especially now how they're able to fund transit, yeah, they get a lot more support from the state, but also recently they passed congestion pricing, which helps a lot in funding for their transit. While in the Bay Area, the, we only have some studies mostly from the MTC, the Metropolitan.
Transportation.
Transportation, yeah. They've only done studies so far, which only restrict mostly just for San Francisco, what's specifically called in their policy a "quartet area." It's just basically, think of congestion pricing, but more specifically in a specific like neighborhood or a smaller section of a city. Examples, notable examples around the real world is Singapore, they have a quarter or congestion pricing, London, and broadly speaking, I think Denmark and most European cities have seen pretty much widespread success in at least politically getting it passed through, but also providing at least a bit more funding for transit. So I just kind of like want to add a bit of context to that, like maybe someday in the future that the Bay Area could see some sort of congestion pricing, but most likely we will probably mostly see it, maybe not in Pinole, but San Francisco or Bay Bridge or some sort of like system similar to that. And that's all I have to add. And I guess that's my report. Yeah.
Anything else?
Downtown San Francisco is kind of semi-deserted.
And that's why they're studying it.
It's just. For congested pricing. One thing, you know, when Santa Clara County Transit Authority was set up, or the Valley Transit Authority, it actually went through the voters, but one of the key components was their financing, which is via the property tax, unlike other, other agencies. So they're not facing the, that cliff yet, although they have ridership problems.
They also don't provide as much service as, as other agencies. And anyways, Vice Chairman, is there anything else that you wanted to add in your, to your report?
No, I think we went pretty far afield with discussion there, so I'll just leave it there.
Yeah. Anyone has any questions about transit, feel free to find me somewhere. Commissioner Bender, anything you'd like to report out?
No.
Commissioner Uch?
Nothing to report at the moment.
And moving on to a public comment, is there anyone online at this time who would like to comment on, on this? There's no one online right now. With that, we will move to our communications. Commissioner Bender, anything, any communications?
No.
Commissioner Uch?
No.
Commissioner Lam Julian?
Nope.
Commissioner Huey?
No.
And Vice Chairman?
Just wanted to say that I attended the city's joint Pride slash Juneteenth celebration this past Sunday and it was an excellent event. City staff did a great job putting it on and getting it all together. It was great having a lot of people from the community there. It was lovely experience. Hopefully it'll work out that well in future events. Just wanted to praise city staff for the work they did there and everybody who took part in it.
Thank you. And no communications for myself. Our next meeting will be, our reg, the regular Planning Commission meeting will be on June 23rd at 7 o'clock. And with that, we will adjourn. Thank you.